3:30 PM here in Winston State, January 24th. I'd like to call tonight's regular Board of Education meeting to order. Tammy, can we have a roll call, please?
Paul Crew.
Here.
Chad Krieger. Kendra Osmond.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Jacqueline Cremler.
Here.
Nubs Ashbeck.
Here.
Brett Waller. Lynda Yingling. Kevin Blake.
Here. Can you please join me and Shannon as you're able to face the flag for our Project of Edisons? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion, justice, and law.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill High School Board of Education. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all of the times.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda, first thing will be public comments to the board. I did not have any sheets turned in. Anybody wanting to help make a public comment should do so now. Normally, we will do recognition. We will forego that until next month. We have a couple of parties to recognize then. We'll kick off tonight with our student Board of Education representative reports. Today, we got some information from both Brooke Ruda and Max Black. Turn it over to you guys.
Sounds good. So it's already time for grade nine for letting start thinking about their future at Merrill High School. So on Tuesdays, juniors rejected their classes for next year. Today's sophomores did, and freshmen are going to tomorrow. Along with the new semester, students started new classes. For everyone I've talked to, the transition seems to be going well, and everyone's pretty happy now that the stress of high schools are over. We want to recognize our amazing pet band that plays at sporting events. On Friday, we had eighth graders come over to play with us, and some alumni showed up as well. Everyone gets pumped when they play waiting for the game to start, and I've seen the opposing team dancing along, so everyone loves that band.
I don't know why I'm so red. Upcoming for our choir students. On February 16th, our annual production of Dinner and a Show will be performed, and tickets are actually on sale this week for $10 for just the show, and then $20 for the show and the meal. And then, since winter last week was evidently in full swing, our MHS sports are also. Our hockey team just recently beat Rhinelander in overtime, which was very, very exciting for our EMU players. Our wrestling team has also been extremely successful in their season. Our basketball team has been working extremely hard to stay competitive with our conference teams. And then, last week Monday, our seniors met up for a class meeting where we received our local scholarship packets. There were over 75 scholarships that we could choose from, and last year, we were told that there was over $500,000 in scholarships given to students. As a senior myself, I would like to thank all the community members that make MHS scholarship programs such a well-known success. The opportunities that this provides is truly life-changing for those impacted by it, and as a student body, we cannot be more grateful.
Thank you, Brooke, Max. Any board members have any questions pertinent to these two in the high school? Otherwise, that was a nice report. We'll come up with something more creative to ask you for next month, perhaps. No, thank you both. A lot of good information there, and thanks again for that. Next on our agenda is our fiscal year 23 annual financial audits. I'll turn this over to Shannon for an introduction.
Sure. Dr. Strike, the other topic summary sheet. We have the reps from Larson Allen here today to kind of run over our audit reports. Gentlemen, step up.
Well, I am Stuart Randall. John Truppin is here. We are the two individuals that oversee the financial and single audit of the Merrill School District. John's here to support me and make sure I don't say anything too stupid. So I just want to take a couple of minutes here to walk through the audit, walk through the financial statements, kind of what we do as part of the audit of the school district. And feel free to interrupt me with any questions, anything related to the audit. I can't help you with some of the other topics out there. So I'm going to take this presentation or discussion and subdivide it into about three different areas where we focus on the financial statements, and this is reflected within the three different letters within the financial statements themselves. You should have received PDF of the financial statements, and I'm going to be mainly focusing on the big, long PDF that's about 80 pages long that contains the actual financial statements themselves. So I'm going to start on page one of the financial statements, and this is number page one at the bottom of the page, not necessarily page one of the PDF, but this is our independent auditor's report. This letter here is about three pages long. This focuses on the financial audit of the school district. It spells out our opinion of the financial statements, management's responsibilities, and our responsibilities for the audit. This is the final results of the audit, and our opinion discusses the financial accuracy of the financial statements in that we are issuing an unmodified opinion. If we go to the next page and look at other responsibilities for the audit of financial statements, purpose of the audit is to determine whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material mistake. We do that via our opinion. Our opinion says that we are issuing an unmodified opinion, which means that these financial statements do represent the financial position of the school district as of and for the year ended June 30, 2023. That's what we want. That's what you want. That is the highest standard for the financial statements, and it's something that the school district management should be commended upon, that they were able to maintain accurate financial records for the year then ended. Just continuing on through the letter itself, it goes through a little bit of the other sections of the financial statements discussing required supplementary information, supplementary information, and then the other reporting required by governmental auditing standards. We'll get to that in a little bit, but the summary of the last three pages is that the school district received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is what the school district wants. Next, over the next couple of pages, we actually start diving a little bit into the financial numbers of the school district. Pages five and six are the government-wide financial statements, which aggregate all of the financial data of the school district into one easy-to-review report, but the main fund financials start on page seven, which disaggregates all of those information into the funds that the district is used to see. So looking at page seven, this is your balance sheet of your major funds, which includes the general fund, the head start project, and all of your other non-major funds into one column with a total. And so, looking at your general fund, I'm not going to spend too much time talking about all of this, but once again, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt. This is as of June 30th, and we're already in January, so you hopefully have seen most of these numbers. But the number I want to just talk about a little bit is that, looking at the bottom of the general fund column in fund balances, the school district has a total of $8.6 million worth of general fund fund balance. Essentially, not much difference between your unassigned and your total fund balance. That essentially represents your reserves, how much the district has in savings as of June 30, 2023, available for spending, available for operations, carryover into the 2324 school year. Looking at the total column, that includes all of your governmental funds, so that includes your debt service, your Fund 21, special revenue donations fund, your food service fund, community services. In total, $12.4 million, of which 8.6 remains unassigned. 3.7 million is restricted for various purposes, so that would reflect your community service funds, which per state statute, you have to use for community-related events or your debt fund 21 activity, which is restricted based on donors or for scholarships or the student activity funds. Any questions on your balance sheet? If not, continuing to page through the financial statements, starting on page nine, nine to 10, that's your income statement, shows your revenues, shows your expenses. Nothing too unusual there. Your general fund generated revenue of about $41 million and about $40 million worth of expenses, and a transfer out of $650,000, which you see on page ten, leading to a small decrease of about $40,000, or I should say, a small increase of $14,000 in your general fund fund balance. Going up is always a good thing as opposed to going down. And that's pretty much all I want to focus on in terms of the main financial statements. Going forward, there's about 30 to 40 pages worth of footnotes within this report that dives down a little bit more into the main balance sheet accounts, with some information on district's capital assets, debt, the participation in the WRS pension system, a little bit of information on lease tables. If you remember back to last year's presentation, we talked a bit about leases. That was implemented last year, being fiscal year end 63022. There weren't any very significant accounting standards that went into effect for 63023 that affected the school district, so we didn't have to spend much time in there. So the next stopping point is pretty far into the report itself. I'm looking at page 60. This is number page 60 at the bottom. I unfortunately don't know what page of the PDF is.
63.
63, according to Paul.
I think.
It should start, "Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Compliance Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance in Other Matters," and continues thereon. This is the second aspect of the audit that we look at. First aspect, all of that was based on the financial numbers itself. This is our report regarding our assessment of the district's internal controls. As part of our audit, we have to gain and understand that internal controls, and if we become aware of any deficiencies, this is where we communicate them. And so, looking at the bottom of that page 60, we'll see that we do include reference to finding 2023-001 as a significant deficiency. Get to circle that in a couple of minutes as to what exactly that is, but one thing to note is that is the only financial statement finding that we have. There are no material weaknesses. Material weaknesses are very significant deficiencies, and a significant deficiency is less than a material weakness, which I think I used the word significant a few too many times in that sentence, but material weaknesses are worse than significant deficiencies. So next, turning to page 63, is the final of the three letters, the final of the three sections of our audit, and this focuses on the state and federal single audit grant control or grant audit that we do. When an entity expends over $750,000 of federal awards, which the district regularly does, the federal government requires that, as part of the annual audit, the auditors do a test of internal controls and compliance over federal, and then the state comes in and says, "We want you to look at our state grants, too." And that's what this report is saying and detailing what has happened regarding to that. Now, if you read through this report or this letter, once again, it's about three pages long. I'm not going to do it. What you will find is that there were no findings. We did not have any deficiencies identified in terms of compliance or internal controls, which is, once again, something commendable that the district should be proud of. What we have seen over the last couple of years is, we all survived COVID. The district received a lot of COVID funding. That caused a lot of chaos on that front in terms of how to spend those funds, making sure the procedures are in effect. And so, now that a lot of that stuff has quieted down, procedures have been implemented, and the district has been able to adequately design its internal controls to ensure that it remains in compliance with all the requirements of the grant system. So like I said, that's a very good thing for the district. Now, I promised to talk about finding 2023-001, which is on one of the very last pages, page 72, and this is in relation to preparation of the financial statements. We've talked about this before, but just to reiterate, it is the district's, every entity who gets audited, responsibility to prepare the financial statements that I have been walking, running through practically. This is a finding that most districts get because the time and the skills required to prepare this financial statement, it doesn't necessarily make economic sense for the district to invest in these skills and the knowledge for these financial statements. They are still the district's responsibilities. If you go back to the first opinion, that's part of the auditor's responsibilities, but the district, in turn, for deficiency sake or accuracy sake, has contracted with us to assist in the preparation of these financial statements. The underlying financial data included with them is still all the district's. We have just taken that and formatted them into a format that is in accordance with accounting rules and regulations. That's what this is saying. It's your responsibility. You have decided to delegate that to us as an additional service. Other than that, that's kind of everything that I wanted to talk about related to the audit we completed for this past year. There are a couple of things just to look forward to into 2324 and beyond. The accounting rules are always changing. There aren't really any significant new accounting rules in effect for 2024, but looking for 2025, there is going to be some changes with accrued benefits, which we will work with the district to make sure everything is correct in that regards. But now that the district has had stability in its financial department, its business office for a couple of years, because you have had turnover, new positions, and duties reassigning, it's always important to make sure that the district's policies, procedures are constantly being assessed for best practices, make sure that adequate segregation of duties is maintained, but also that these accounting standards that do come into effect still make your policies are constantly updated for them. So within the last two years, we have seen new standards like incentive leases and for subscription-based IT arrangements. Well, the district should probably look through some of its capital asset policies, some of its debt policies, just to make sure that they accurately reflect the current environment of accounting standards, but also that there are adequate internal controls to maintain the accuracy of and requirements of those standards. One way to look at what the accounting rules are trying to do is to make sure that every single multi-year, every single liability, if the district has committed funds to future periods, that is reflected in the financial statements. So one way that we've been recommending to districts, all entities, to make sure that these agreements and liabilities are reflected is that every single one of those agreements, they go to your finance committee or they go to the business office. Just make sure that there is at least one centralized tracking of all these obligations that can perfectly fine ahead. They just need to be tracked and reflected properly in the financial statements. So that is what I have said. Questions? Comments?
Just one thing to add, I guess, with the GASB's that are out there. So we lived through GASB 87, which are leases, which are reflective of this financial statement. They were reflected last year. Subit is, which are the IT arrangements. You didn't really have any material ones, so you don't see that in there. And I like the comment that Stuart made where you basically, it's not done, right? Those aren't done. Those are continuous from this point on. So that doesn't mean you're not going to enter into an IT arrangement tomorrow on this financial statement or this audit you're hearing right now, and you're going to have to identify that. So what we're seeing is a challenge for districts. Okay, we did all the heavy lifting. We did the work to implement these, and it's kind of like, ah, we're done. No, not really, because you have to have a system in place to identify those. Otherwise, you're going to miss one, and there's going to be a binding or something like that. So you really want to make sure that that control is in place every single day throughout this point on forward. And I think you're doing that, obviously, from a contract basis, but again, just always be on your toes with that. The other comment I guess I'll conclude with is, with the last two GASB's and then the one that's coming up, you can really see a pattern in what they're doing. And they're putting, you mentioned it, Stuart, they're really putting and recording, and this is all entities, liabilities. They're really focusing on liabilities. The accrued compensated absences that's coming up, that's going to bring more liabilities on your financial statements. It's going to bring sick leave, which currently isn't because it's time off. They're redefining a lot, the term liability, to capture some of that stuff. Why? Because they feel there's a huge balance in entities out there that are not being reflective of that. So you're seeing a kind of a trend there. I don't think that's going to stop. I think they're going to keep looking at all the areas, whether it's pension liabilities in the rearview mirror that they already did, or something else in the future that they haven't addressed today. So just be wary of that. There's other much larger GASB's coming up that are going to change potentially the whole entire financial statements. That's going to be years out. They're going to keep pushing that out, I guarantee it. That's a major change.
A lot, yes, I'm hoping.
Dating back to 2001, when GASB 34 hit your financial statements, if you were looking at financial statements back then. So this is going to be a major change. Again, I think we're quite a few years away from that, but just so you're aware, things are changing.
I believe Ron had a question.
Yes.
I had a question. The ending balance, $8,657,000 toward the end value. What was that percentage of the upper end value percentage?
So in terms of your annual expenditures, if we compare to your annual expenditures of $40.4 million in your general fund, that's about 21%.
That's what we wanted, Greg. We were down like 12, 15.
14 for a long time. Kind of with that, maybe 20 to 25 as a common, but I think we're trying to cheat for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Paul?
On that fund balance, is there a limit to how much money we can put into that fund balance? Is there a liability to have too much in there?
Having more reserves is always, is never a bad thing. That is, the level of fund balance is something that you as a school board needs to monitor and maintain. There are pros and cons to having it from a public perception, from a governance point of view, but we have seen districts with more, we have some districts with less.
DPI has nothing to say about the fund balance?
They say 20 to 25% is, well, no, they say sufficient enough to build, that you want to avoid short-term borrowing if you can, which we do short-term borrow, as you know, so that would tell you that maybe it should be, you know, from that perspective. They do, I think they casually throw out that 20 to 25% as well, but...
That's a bit of an industry, government-level recommendation to that 20 to 25%.
20 to 25% is kind of a magical number. What it really represents is a time period that you can operate without any revenue coming in, and they really do that because you're in that range, right? And you still have to short-term borrow. If you get up over 25% and up into the higher levels, you would not have to short-term borrow. And again, it's kind of like a minimum threshold to do that. There's some that have 20% that don't have to short-term borrow, so it's all a cash flow game, right? As far as when grants come in and when your expenditures go out. But the strategy there, as he said, there's pros and cons, so there's different approaches, right? To be more proactive and fund different projects you have, you might build up that fund balance and borrow less. Again, with the levy limit calculations and all that stuff, and how complicated that is, it is a little bit challenging to say, hey, we're going to grow 30%. So you don't see that too often, but there's some out there that have higher than that even, so just for various circumstances. So there's no right or wrong, but you're right in the range where we consider that good.
Are we in a good position to say that Friday, our entire staff, everybody, said, "I'm out of here. I'm retired." Do we have enough to cover that in our post-employment health plan? Are we, is there enough in there? Or is this, and that was one philosophical nightmare that came up one time, and we wondered about that.
Because we have tiered retirement benefits, we have, I think it's in the teens left, additional staff that would get that level of tier. Anything beyond that is a HRA contribution that is capped at about $9,000, I think. So from that perspective, I would say that we don't have Fund 73 anymore. We annually budget for those, and that's slowly, how much we have to put in is slowly declining year after year as more have retired, and we have fewer staff that have that level of benefit. That being said, though, I think it's something we have to look at in terms of what are others giving in retirement benefit and the fact that we don't have much. What we're offering, we need to consider that, too, in terms of a strategy for employment, satisfaction, redemption, et cetera. But from a financial standpoint, I'd say we're in pretty good shape.
Ron, have a follow-up?
Just one more. You have no major findings, real outstanding findings in that?
No.
We have had the past.
Yes, you have.
And I think that shows very well our financial director, superintendent, the administration have things under control.
I would agree with those.
You would say that?
Yep. And I would just say also continue to monitor those policies, make sure they are, like I said, maintained, and continue to ensure that the financial records are accurate for the district.
Thank you.
Stuart, can I ask that finding 2023-001, what percentage of your clients have it?
Of the entities I work with, we prepare the financial statements for every single one of those entities that includes both municipalities and counties. I would say, I can't speak for all 400 and some public school districts, I would say somewhere in the 90 to 100% range for districts. It is very rare for school districts to issue financial statements. I'm not saying there aren't some out there, but you are in the vast majority of there.
It is rare because of really one factor, and that is because DPI is such a regulation over the financial aspect. You have to do annual reports. Every school district has to do an annual report. So even if you spent the time and energy and money to staff and have that being prepared completely internally, you still have to do the annual report. So that's different. That's unusual. That's not everywhere in the country, and it's also not everywhere in the state when you look at non-school districts. So that's why we see a lot more clients preparing financial statements in county government, city government than we do in school districts. Even some of the, we honored some of, a lot of the top 10 school districts in Wisconsin, and very few of those do. Some are actually prepared internally, but they don't go as far as doing all the footnotes and everything, so they still get the binding, so no difference. They're not doing this.
I just want to echo what Ron said and thank Dr. Strike for really getting us in this position, because we have had this lately historically and have gotten over that. We also have crept our fund balance up to kind of within our arms' reach now, getting out of the short-term borrowing. Now, that's a discussion group they have, or if they're on that path, but we certainly are taking the steps in the right direction, so thank you, Dr. Strike, for that.
Good job.
I was happy to hear that 21% compared to 42.
Any other follow-up questions or discussion from board members? Now, as we do have a recommended motion, Ron?
I motion to approve the audited financial statements and findings from CNI as presented for 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Motion by Ron, and then seconded by Paul. I'll ask if there's any additional questions or discussion on the topic or motion. Additional questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions this evening? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is the administrative reports. For normal, board members do sometimes ask questions in advance for clarification purposes, and they can be repeated tonight at the meeting if there's anything that they want on the meeting recording. This time, I'll turn it over to Shannon for administrative reports review.
So first report tonight is the Director of CNI report, which covers Act 20 literacy. Amanda Patterson is here tonight. Amanda and Melissa did a really nice job at CTP, running through this law and how it impacts us and how we have to prepare for that. And I think the topic summary sheet is very thorough, but she's here if anybody asks any questions. Next up is the Pine River School for Young Learners, monthly data. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, Shannon. Is this a point to ask about that test I mentioned to you this morning, the 2017 law, the citizenship test?
The citizenship.
Is this, do you cover that portion, that test, Amanda?
Say that again.
The citizenship test.
High school citizenship.
My granddaughters came home, and we played the game for about an hour, and they were amazed that Grandpa knew as much as he knew, but then I started reading, and it just came out in 2017, but it appears to be an unfunded and unsupported mandate. What do we do with it? You'd run a test, and if they fail, how many failed, do you think?
I don't know the results at all from that. I haven't researched that yet at this point, but that's something I certainly can dig into.
I can, although, so we run into that barreling of the classes, so it's part of the barreling course that's around quarter graduation. And so, students will have options to retake it until they pass it. students will be, have options to retake it until they pass it, because this graduation part.
But they have to pay for each time they take it over?
No. No.
Now, the girls, the girls misunderstood, they told me that they thought it was sixty dollars.
No, I didn't, it's free.
No, it might have been a loss involved here too, so, I get one grand dollar.
That's probably terrorism.
Yeah.
No.
It was kind of, it was kind of a shocking, a shocking experience to sit there and hear that a test is issued to citizens coming into the country, the high school kids have to pass. I think it's good. I mean, they, they knew, they knew well what they were talking about, but just had never heard about. Uh, I must be sleeping in mushrooms or whatever.
Well.
Yeah.
Well.
She's in government right now.
I'm in government right now, I just took it the other day. Um, for AP Gov, I just had that last year, AP Government, you had to pay sixty dollars to take the AP test.
Exam.
But that's, right. So, did she take the class last year, or is it this year?
They're sophomores.
And they're currently taking it, like you recently?
I think so, I, I.
I'm in the class, I, I just.
Yeah.
And you, it's a Google app that we just take until you pass.
Open book test type thing?
Yep. And like the one that they just took, that's just a practice test. So they, it's just to see where they're at.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I didn't like the idea that it's unfunded and unsupported, that, that DPI doesn't gather the information themselves. Uh, we have, we gather the information, we have to gather the information, you know, they're mandating it. There, that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
I'll go.
Uh, Pine River School for Young Learners, uh, report is there, enrollment numbers, et cetera. Um, Mr. Martinovich is here tonight, if he had any questions right now. Next up is the Food Service Report, uh, including board invites and the participation numbers for the month of December. Laura is not here this evening. Questions, I can throw in on that. Item D is the Director of Businesses Services Report, uh, talking about how can we, staffing meetings, the budget development, Fund Forty-Six, et cetera. Um, Dr. Strick is, of course, here, if they have any questions from that report. Item E is the Director of Buildings and Grounds, Transportation Update, Building Construction Update, some of these payments, projects, et cetera. Um, Dale Bergman is here this evening, if anybody has any questions, I can ask him. And then item up is the Superintendent's Report. Um, and I really have just two items, and I kind of gave everybody notice except for Amber, sorry, Amber, we're gonna talk about that convention, so, we'll give you a minute there. Uh, so, uh, myself, Kevin, Ron, Amanda, Amber, Dale, uh, went to the state conference or convention this past week, and kind of, uh, each kind of broke up, did our own little sessions throughout the day, things that were pertinent to our specific areas. Um, and we're just gonna give kind of like a ten thousand short recap on that. I, uh, I attended, uh, sessions that dealt with board governance, um, some pretty interesting concepts about growing your own talent pool, your own teacher base, which is something that's very, um, of interest to us, as we continue, like many places, to wrestle with staffing shortages, and so we'll kind of develop some of those ideas moving forward, and come to the board with some proposals on that, um, hopefully before the end of school year. Um, some of us attended, uh, an interesting session on onboarding new board members, which inspired us to have a conversation in the car coming back about what we are currently doing. We've asked Tammy to run the checklist, uh, and so we're gonna revisit that thing, and, um, because of the nature of this particular election, we're considering onboarding people a little bit earlier than April election, because we have that opportunity, um, this, this year potentially. And then I attended a, a session on community, um, education, and as a way to bring the community into the, uh, the, the buildings, and grow support from the schools, which I thought was very innovative and interesting, and we're gonna be giving that some look here this spring as well. So, I live in a big, big sessions, those are kind of the highlights of the sessions that I've attended, anybody else that's free, I can chime in and talk about.
Ron, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I went to two different, uh, school finance, uh, sessions, and then one on basic financial oversight of districts. Lot of good information, I mean, they throw a lot at you, you know, or, I'm trying to keep up. Also went to the onboarding new members, I went to two of them, one was, well, if you got a question, call us, it was almost like a sales pitch. It was like, the second day of the year, Wes, with it, was pretty good information, not much. Uh, three general sessions they had, the governor was there, so, and then you walked through the exhibit halls, um, anything you wanted to know about, anything, anything you wanted free, it was there. I mean, pens, pencils, cups, bags, you may, but he's there. So, it was very interesting, and I went, I had a good time, and learned a lot, so, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
I guess to summarize, some of the things that, that I went to, as I started with the pre-convention workshop, was called navigating challenging discussions to engage your community. So, a lot of the things that I, I went to started with community engagement, uh, which has a financial piece to that, or accounting, or accountability. Um, there were some that were tied to facilities, being that I'm on that committee as well, uh, some of that. I'm boarding new school board members that we talked about already. Uh, some of that was also, uh, teacher retention and student achievement, and all that ties together. Um, as Ron had mentioned, there was just a, a number of things, and you learn them in forty-five to sixty-minute chunks. And then, uh, of course, I'm sure we each had our, our favorite keynote speaker, as Amanda might mention, Sean Covey was there. Uh, sorry, I don't have the picture of those two together, uh, but, uh, mine was, uh, John Quinones from, uh, What Would You Do?, ABC commentator, or TV show, so, I, in fairness, I don't have that picture to put up there either. I'm sure Ron already mentioned Governor Evers was there, State Superintendent Underly, Maya Payne Smart also spoke on Friday before we left, so, a lot of good information. Uh, and did get to see a number of, of vendors, and certainly as I go through the exhibit hall, I notice all of the people that our administrators know, Shannon or Dale, Amanda, Amber, that they're not just the people from, that provide the services, but it could be other administrators from other districts, et cetera, so, a lot of good information, Ron, that it's, uh, power-packed with information for three, four days, I'm sure.
Exhibit halls, anything from school buses, uh, no, we had school buses parked there, so.
Amanda, Amber, Dale, have you to add?
Yeah, I, I, I would just add, I, so, to, a lot of the sessions that I went to focused on, um, mental health involving students, the cultures of the school and buildings, um, just different like wellness activities and ideas for both just supporting staff as well as students. Um, one specifically I went to was just on substance use and how schools are using, um, different methods, and instead of just kind of punitive or consequence-based, but to really get some programs, some intervention in to help students to make healthier lifestyle choices. Um, also went to one on safety with kind of that same lens of how do we involve students within our school, um, to help create safe environments. Um, and then the legal updates, one I went to spoke about, uh, Act Twenty with the reading law, but then also talked about inclusivity, kind of reviewed some of the updates with some of our different student populations, such as transgender students, and just the updated kind of legal information on those pieces.
Uh, like Kevin said, I very much enjoyed getting to see Sean Covey. We did get our picture taken with him too, which was our extra bonus excitement. Um, and John Quinones as well. Um, however, I attended a number of sessions about, um, actually two sessions that had student panels there of high school students, um, sharing about what helps them to feel included, um, and like they're valued, seen, and heard within schools, um, and really gave me, um, we had been, been talking about having a student panel here for our staff in the future, so got some great questions to ask them to, um, work towards that, um, and having them have that voice in our schools and that leadership. I also attended a session about recognizing staff, and actually got some really, um, different and unique, but easy ways for us to be thinking differently about how we're recognizing staff throughout the year. Um, so, and I think that's just a really important piece of that as well. Lots of really great information, and, um, certainly was enjoyable.
Did open, no. Um, I focused a lot of my attention this year down there on networking with districts, uh, not only the sessions that, uh, I attend, some of the same ones that Kevin did with community outreach, because of position we're in right now, coming up with a referendum, and how we can engage our community better. So I spent a lot of time in those sessions, or after sessions, but talked to the presenters a little bit that had successes with their communities, try to get some more insider information about how they work within that to maintain a good relationship with their community. A lot of it started building that trust, that, you know, you do what you say you're gonna do, and how you're gonna do it, and I, I feel that's, um, probably the most important part of that convention, is the networking we can get, not only with people I see that I work with, but people that I don't work with, that have success stories, and try to feed some information or get some information off of them, so we can bring those successes back to Merrill, and help our, help us be successful in our endeavors with engaging our community. I did also attend a, a bunch of things on school safety, as you know, that's a passion of mine here, so, um, it's good to know that we're doing things right, and we're, um, successful with what we're doing here, and the team that we have assembled to take care of those things is, is, should be applauded for that. And, um, I'd just like to thank the school board for allowing us administrators an opportunity to go down there and get that valuable information.
Any questions on that? In case you may not know, Sean Covey, who it is?
He's on my education hero list, so.
His dad, Stephen Covey, wrote Seven Traits of an Allied American Union, his son wrote Seven Traits of an Allied American Union, and other things, so.
Yes, and he focuses a lot on student leadership in schools, um, which has been a huge part of my past life, so.
Uh, then, just briefly, I'll kind of update where we're at on the referendum, and we'll start formalizing this process, uh, much more so starting next week. Um, subsequent of the board, we'll last, uh, last, uh, together at a special board meeting, we did draft a press release that was sent out, and we started to get some inquiries in that effect at Channel Nine today. Um, and we are developing our communication calendar to finalize that, which I will share with the board. You're likely familiar with that, the past referendums was, uh, it's a giant, it shows timelines of the passes and most of the things, and so, that's being finalized, and we'll share that around, uh, and then we, uh, the tools, and we did, so, but I'll, I'll, I'll figure that out much more as well, as fashion moving forward, and we're starting that kickoff. Any questions on that report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on the agenda is community meeting reports. We'll start with the Facilities Committee, attached toward the draft minutes from the January third committee meeting. Ron Liberty is chair, and other members of our Facilities Committee are here for board member questions. Do you have any questions for the Facilities Committee this evening? Any questions for the Facilities Committee? Otherwise, we'll move on to the Finance Human Resources Committee, attached toward the draft minutes for the January tenth meeting. Ron Liberty is chair, and other members of that committee are available for questions. Board members have any questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee members? Any questions for Finance Human Resources Committee? Otherwise, we'll move on to our Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, also known as CTP. The draft minutes from the January tenth committee meeting were provided. Paul Crews is chair, and other members of our CTP committee are available for questions. Any questions for our CTP committee members? Any questions for our CTP committee members? Hearing none, we'll move on on our agenda. Next item is unfinished business. We have nothing categorized as unfinished business at this time, so we'll move on to Board of Education business, and we will start with the Head Start Transportation waiver. That topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Is anyone willing to make a motion? Paul?
I move to approve the Head Start Transportation waiver for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Motion by Paul, we have a second.
Oh, second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda tonight is the open enrollment spaces available at MEPS, that's per the twenty-eleven Wisconsin Act one fourteen, discussion of twenty-fifteen Act fifty-five, open enrollment for pupil disabilities, attached to is a topic summary sheet from Amber Aluska, and we do have a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Ron?
Motion to approve classroom capacity for open enrollment purposes, and do not deny students with disabilities based on space for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five open enrollment period.
Motion by Ron, we have a second. Second by Jacqueline. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or on this specific motion? Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is purchase of school furniture. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dale Bergman. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Paul?
I move to approve the purchase of the school furniture as presented here.
Motion by Paul, we have a second. Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the purchase of the Merrill High School Fieldhouse screens, uh, or dividers, I believe some people will call them, divider curtains. Uh, attached was a topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. We do have a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Nubs?
I recommend approval of the purchase of two divider curtains.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the summer projects list, attached is a topic summary sheet provided by Dale Bergman, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion? Ron?
Motion to approve the summer maintenance project as funding is available.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? A second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Jacqueline?
I did. I'm sorry, I was at that meeting, but I don't know that I, which, I just wanted to clarify, are any of the projects on the summer maintenance list contingent of the referendum? Or, like, are we waiting for the outcome of that, these ones on this list?
No.
No. Okay. And then, I guess, my other, I feel like I anticipated the answer to this, because I feel like it was discussed, but I just wanna like double check for myself. Um, the playground reconstruction, those are the only things on the list that are asset dollars, the others are from the maintenance budget.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering, like, the asset dollars are the ones that have to be spent? That's why we're prioritizing, like, the playgrounds, and that would be something worth waiting for as far as referendum outcome?
Correct.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was following that part.
So the asset funds have to be spent? So the S R funds have to be spent by September 24 and they are allowable expense on grass here, S R Kelly. So that's what we chose to do.
To do that, yep, okay. I just wanted to make sure I followed that clearly. Okay, that's all.
Good questions, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this motion or topic?
Are those bringing playground with them, the kids?
Yes.
I thought a dollar about, I figured it must be a brand new playground. Okay.
Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the BenQ panels. Attached topic summary sheet from Andrew Kaler and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion on this topic? Paul?
Move to approve the purchase of the BenQ panels to the amount of $147,500 to be paid by S R funds.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Ron?
I have a question for Amanda and Amber. That thing I sent you for that machine, would that work on a BenQ panel? Any idea if there would be like software available to put it to that or not?
I'm not sure. I get the impression when I look at that, that that has, because it would be flat.
You could stand it up.
Oh, you can stand it up as well.
That stands up, so you can, okay.
I guess I'm not sure if that would fit on the BenQ panel. I didn't have a chance to send that to Andrew yet to see.
We just thought of it that maybe rather than buying that machine, if you bought the software, someone got it on the BenQ panels because they're everywhere.
Yep.
Would that be, I still be feasible? You and Andrew figured that one out? I think that'd be great. I watched it. I mean, it was, it was amazing.
Yeah, that is incredibly innovative.
Yes, yes.
So to clarify for the rest of the board and the audience, I mean, that was a science-based anatomy.
It was a table, probably this made as this table. Full body on there as a skeleton and that, and if you wanted to look at the liver and the liver parts come up with all the fields and you can do animals. FFAs are buying these to do things with animals. So instead of buying this machine, you buy the program is what I'm thinking. Put it on the BenQ panels and you have it. I watched it for 15 minutes and it was really amazing. You saw it too.
Just a thought, maybe to put it in touch with people in D C. We have similar programs for our classes. If you wanted, I could get you who to talk to down there and see if you do it a little cheaper than buying the machine or getting the other machine. We.
This machine.
I'll talk to you afterwards.
If you could get the software. Yeah, that'd be good too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any additional discussion or questions in regards to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Niola's Volume 33, Number 1, Technical Corrections. Per our Bylaw 0131.3, the superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies, providing an overview and list of those technical corrections this evening. This is informational only. Certainly wanted everyone to be aware of what did come up in those regards. Next item on our agenda is Merrill High School Band Endowment Fund donation. Attached was a donation form and cover letter or memo from Jay Teleski due to the fact that the donation is over $2,500, which is a limit we set in our policy 7230. This donation comes to the board separately for approval. And there is a recommended motion? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the donation of funds from Merrill High School Band, excuse me, Endowment Fund Incorporated valued at $7,148.88 for instrumental music program at Merrill High School.
A motion by Kendra. It was second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Kendra?
I would just say thank you.
What was that?
I would just say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Just a comment, this was something that was formed over 30 years ago by some local people that had an interest in maintaining the band program outside of the school budget. Because the director at that time of the band, Dale Smith, who has since retired, said to me one time, the budget or the financial needs of the band will exceed the financial ability of the school budget. So the thought was, and there were seven people here, that three of which are now deceased as I'm looking at this, felt it'd be a good idea to form a separate corporation outside of the school district to help fund the band program. And it went for 30-plus years, but there's always a time to end a good thing and the current directors felt now was a time to end the corporation. I spoke to Ellie Welch, the band director, and she said there's many needs that they have. So this $7,100 will come to good use.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions in regard to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Question?
You said it was over 30 years. Did they do like an annual contribution? Or was it just, you know what I mean? I guess I was just curious.
Who did annual?
The corporation, the group that came together to help support outside of the district.
Well, what we would do typically is students would apply for scholarships to go to summer band camps. And then we would provide that, those scholarships typically. The interest in summer band camps has just kind of dwindled. I'm not even certain they exist anymore. But they would be all over the state and kids would go to that. So that was the big, one big thing that we tried to fund all the time. So it was kind of an as-needed basis.
Okay, that's my thought next was going to be, since you said all that things can trend, what do you anticipate that to look like in the future? But if the need like for like, there's not kids going to summer band camp, then I can see why.
We designed the corporation to be more of awarding of scholarships. And then when the kids weren't going, it was kind of like, well, we had to try to be innovative and anyway.
Thank you for giving me some more insight.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any other discussion or questions in regards to this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Just on a side note, I know this was through the Endowment Fund. They still have Band Boosters and other organizations. So this was one entity that had helped for many, many years. As Jay had said, providing scholarships and other opportunities along the way.
They also stayed for travel, didn't they? Kevin, when a band went to, if you remember back, all the big drum and rillacor competitions.
Sure.
Our band won a lot of awards back in the day. Nothing like that is the same with that, I suppose.
Yeah, they still travel to the state competitions. The boosters up on that, the band boosters. Next on our agenda is Seric Kids Program donation of Bamba socks. There's an attached donation form and cover memo from Kelly Morgan due to the fact donation is over the $2,500 limit set that we discussed already in policy 7230. Donation comes to the board separately for approval. And there is a recommended motion. Paul?
I move to approve, approve donation of 2,500 pairs of Bumba socks from the Seric Kids Program valued at $25,000 for the MAPS Nest and distribution to students in need of, in the district.
Motion by Paul. We have a second by Kendra. Do you have any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? I'm just, we're now trying to figure out how to distribute the socks. We have more socks than kids.
They're nice socks.
They're very nice socks. So that'll be the next task. Say for next year. Any additional discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the personnel report, which encompasses hirings, recruitments and resignations or retirements. Attached is an updated personnel report by Dr. Charlie Strike. There is a recommended motion. Someone's willing to make a motion on this topic? Jacqueline?
I recommend a motion to approve the attached personnel report contingent upon release of contract for hirings and upon satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations applicable.
Motion by Jacqueline. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion, questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Before I ask for that motion, I'll ask if anyone would like to pull anything from the consent agenda to be dealt with individually? Otherwise, I would ask for a motion. Ron?
The motion is the consent agenda items A through C, which include minutes of December 20, 2023, January 10, 2024, readings, claims vouchers under seats to the 307,616.63 and donations total of $7,639.
A motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? All right. Next item on our agenda is items for future meetings. This is an opportunity for board members to talk about topics to either be revisited or identify new topics that we have coming up or should keep on the top of our mind. We do always have the opportunity to contact the committee chairs or Superintendent Murray or myself to have items placed on the primary agendas or the committee agendas. At this time, I would open the floor to any discussion on items for future meetings? Any board members have any suggestions or topics? We're staying pretty well on top of those items that have been there. We try to get those through our committees and back to the board as soon as possible. Hearing anything or seeing any hands up, we'll move on. Just a reminder, tomorrow morning, radio program is as it is every Thursday. Tomorrow morning at approximately 8:15, Shannon and I will be on Blue J Radio and talk about tonight's meeting and any future events coming up for the district. Future meetings, just a reminder that MADA's Governance Board meets on Tuesday, February 13 at noon at MADA. Head Start Policy Council meets on Tuesday, February 13, 5:30 PM, the Pioneer River School for Young Learners. Our CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, next meets on Wednesday, February 14, 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Our finance human resources committee meets on Wednesday, February 14, following CTP at 5:00 PM or shortly after. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, February 21 at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Any other events of note? That is our current list, the future meetings. So at this time, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Part N1, perency considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation date of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Purpose of the closed session is to conduct superintendent's regularly scheduled summative evaluation. Do we have that motion this evening? Paul?
Paul, second.
And Ron, second. We have a roll call vote on that, please, Tim.
Paul True?
Aye.
Kendra Adson?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler?
Aye.
Nubs Ashbeck?
Aye.
Kevin Weiss?
Aye.
All right, we will take your questions.